This meeting to order. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the City of Independence, I welcome each of you in attendance as well as those of you who are watching this meeting on City 7 to the Tuesday, February 27th Planning Commission meeting. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will you do roll call, please?
Commissioner, let's see. Commissioner Ferguson.
Here.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Present.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Here.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Here.
And Chairman McLean.
Here. Thank you. First of all, I will ask all of those who thinks that they might like to speak tonight or the applicants, if you would rise and be sworn in. So even if you aren't sure you're going to speak but think you're going to speak, go ahead and get sworn in. All right. Will you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear to tell the whole truth in front of this Planning Commission? If so, say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioners, consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or concerns or corrections?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
Chairman McLean.
Yes. The consent agenda has been approved. The next case that, we have a case that's going to be continued again to the March 26, 2024 meeting. It's continued case 24-100-05, a rezoning of 1301 South Nolan Road. Do I have a, yes?
Make a motion to do that.
Yep.
I second.
You second.
And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 24-100-05 has been continued to March 26, 2024. Okay, our first public hearing is case 24-200-01, special use permit for 10609 East Winter Road. Staff, will you give us a report, please?
Okay, this is case 24-2001, tattoo shop and art gallery, Good Rabbit Tattoo LLC. Applicant is Christopher Lehman. As you look here, it's basically that triangle-shaped, well, it's an L-shaped strip center that's on the triangle piece of property there at 18th and Winter Road to the west of Northern there in the Inglewood District, as you can see on the vicinity map here. And this shows the notification area around that corner, the properties that are within 185 feet of that whole site, not just the tenant space. And as you can see here, it's a large paved property here. That parking lot you see coming off 18th Street, that's abutting the second floor. And then the first floor side is lower, facing Winter Road. And that's where the access to this would be off of. Okay, and you can see the tenant space there on the west side of the building on, what? Yes? Oh, I'm sorry. There we go. A little closer there. So the tenant, the 4,628 square foot tenant space you can see is right in the crux of the corner of this building. And then, so, this area is zoned arts district, which this use is one of those would be allowed in an arts district. Background, section 1441601B limits the total number of quote "body art services," which includes tattoo shops to one for every 15,000 residents in the city. As of the 2020 census, the number of body art service businesses that can operate in the city is capped at eight. However, there are currently only four such businesses operating in Independence, which means that four additional body art services businesses can obtain business license before this cap is reached. Additionally, this property lies within the Inglewood Arts District, which has the Arts District zoning designation. To legally operate a tattoo shop in the Arts District requires a special use permit. The applicant has operated a successful business in Blue Springs but seeks to relocate that business to Independence. As far as the physical characteristics of the property, the property itself is a triangle shape that sits, and that's the entire strip center, not his tenant space, on the western edge of the Inglewood Arts District. The building on the property is a two-story L-shaped structure with many different commercial suites, characteristics of the area. The property is primarily surrounded by single-family residences, several churches, and further to the east is the rest of the Inglewood Arts District with its various shops, galleries, community spaces, restaurants, whatnot. Analysis, consistency with the Independence for All strategic plan. This proposed use could help support the economic prosperity of this segment of the Arts District corridor by the occupation of a unit within this existing commercial building. The comprehensive plan guiding land use principles, well, the city comprehensive plan recommends mixed use for this site. This segment of the East Winter Road corridor has had commercial zoning and uses for decades and is expected to remain here for the foreseeable future. As far as this, on this particular site, there are no apparent historic or archaeological issues. Public utilities, of course, this isn't a developed area, so all the utilities are present on the site or adjacent in the right of ways. Review criteria, recommendations and decisions on special use permit applications must be based on the consideration of the following criteria. The first one, compatibility of the proposed use with the character of the neighborhood. The Arts District contains a mix of small businesses such as restaurants, art galleries, offices, small retail stores, banquet halls, and hair salon. The building where the applicant seeks to locate has primarily been used as office space. The rental of one of these units in this building should not have an effect on the character of the neighborhood. Number two, the extent to which the proposed use is compatible with the adjacent zoning and uses. As mentioned previously, there is an assortment of businesses in this district, and this proposed use should have minimal impact on the area. The third one, the impact of the proposed use on public facilities. So all public facilities are in place here, and this proposed businesses, business is not a significant consumer of water, sanitary sewer, or electrical services. Number four, the suitability of the property for the permitted uses to which it has been restricted under the applicable zoning district regulations. This special use permit would allow an additional land use not already permitted by right in the Arts District. Number five, the extent to which the proposed use may injure or detrimentally affect the use of enjoyment of the property in the area. So based upon the site's zoning and long use as a commercial property, is not expected to affect any of these issues. Number six, the extent to which the proposed use will create excessive stormwater runoff, air pollution, noise pollution, or other environmental harm. As this being a developed site virtually covered with impervious surfaces, there will be no change in the stormwater drainage. This small shop in this existing building will not create any more extensive noise, air, or environmental pollution, other uses that don't require, like, I'm sorry, than other uses that don't require a special use permit. Number seven, the extent to which there's a need for this use in the community. The maximum number of body art shop locations in this city, like I said, is restricted to eight, as a few shops have shattered recently, or shuttered recently. The total number of active shops now stands at four. This proposed business would be the fifth location. Number eight, the ability of the applicant to satisfy any requirements applicable to the specific use imposed pertinent to this article. If approved with a special use permit, the application appears to satisfy the requirements of section 14416 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Number nine, the extent to which public facilities and services are available and adequate to meet the demand for facilities and services generated by the proposed use. This is a long existing commercial property. All public facilities are in place and operational. Number 10, conformance of the proposed use to the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans and policies. The city's updated comprehensive plan envisions mixed use for this site. And number 11, the extent to which the uses will impact sustainability or revitalization of a given area. This special use permit would allow this business to utilize a vacant retail space in a existing commercial property, helping to sustain the commercial base of the area. So, we're looking south directly at the property from, I believe this is the Baptist Church, I'm not sure, parking lot, looking directly south at the L-shaped property there. And then looking directly west as Winter Road goes off to the northwest there. And then looking northwest up on Winter Road, and looking at Inglewood Church here. And then facing southeast, looking back toward the Inglewood District itself. And here's the tenant space. The recommendation, staff recommends approval of this special use permit request with the following conditions. Number one, this special use permit is limited to the unit at 10909 East Winter Road and does not apply to the entire property.
Brian, I think you said that wrong.
Hmm?
I think you said that was wrong.
10609?
Yeah, you said 10.
Okay. Okay. Stand corrected. 10609 East Winter Road and does not apply to the entire property. And number two, the applicant will obtain and maintain all applicable city and state licenses and comply with all health requirements.
All right, thank you. Will the applicant come forward?
Madam Chair. I have a question here, Brian.
Oh, hang on.
Hey, Brian, were we able to put signs out for display? I mean, I know it's all parking lots, so I didn't know if he was able to do that or not.
You see the little, the little yellow sign right there?
Ah, I can't.
In the corner, it's, it's, it's.
Okay, I just want to make sure the sign got.
That metal fencing there, they, Joshua's able to wire it to it, so.
Okay, I just want to make sure we got that posted. Okay. Also, staff, I guess there is no regulations being so many feet from a church or anything like out of school for?
Yeah, that, I mean, that's why they have to get this special use permit, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Sorry. Will the applicant come up, please? State your name and your address.
My address?
You might have to put that microphone up on top.
Yeah.
It's a tall people thing. There you go.
I gotta pull up my address. I recently just moved there. Or you went this address?
No kidding, there. His name's on the table.
Yeah, just set it up on top. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My, oh, my home address?
Yeah.
Give me one second. We just moved there, so. Hey, my name is Chris Lehman, owner of Good Rabbit Tattoo. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. My name is Chris Lehman, owner of Good Rabbit Tattoo. My current address as of now is 11505 East 36th Street South, Independence, Missouri, currently. Yeah, we just bought the house in August. Yeah.
You're gonna have to, like, put it in your notes on your phone.
Yeah.
That's where all my stuff is.
Yep.
What would you like to tell us about the business?
The business is basically kind of more or less an operation of a studio. Currently, we're in Blue Springs off Woods Chapel. We're in the little strip mall that is right next to Sonic with the church parking lot attached to us. And as of now, we've outgrown that space. It's 500 square feet, and we've, we're looking to possibly move and go to this location as of right now. We did take over the location, and we started renovating it, getting the paint and stuff like that going. We are basically, as of everything, I'm online only. It's not as a forum as a walk-in. I'm nervous.
Don't be nervous.
Yeah. It's a, it's a walk-in business, like, tattooing's a walk-in business, but as of COVID, we went to strictly appointments. Everything's online, so basically you find us on Instagram, which a lot of people in Kansas City do. And I bring a lot of traffic from all over Kansas City to get tattooed by me. So when I say it's more or less set as a private studio kind of setting, just appointment based, you can still walk in, but I want to be able to grow this business and put my heart into this and basically kind of show Kansas City like more and like bring more to Independence, because I look at Independence and it's kind of untouched, and I feel like there needs to be a good business that isn't just like bad, more or less, like, just really trying to make grounds and like bring more to the community and really show people that there's more than what it is. And I'm an artist behind everything. I've been doing this for over 14 years, originally from San Diego. I've been in Kansas City for the last six years, so it's like, it's home. And like, the fact is too, it's a couple minutes from our house for our children, stuff like that. I can run back and forth and everything. We're about to have a baby girl, so that's a big, big thing, so.
Congratulations, it is a big thing.
Yeah.
Commissioners, any questions?
I have one.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm really interested in your art side of it, your gallery side of it as well.
So.
Knowing that it's related to Inglewood Arts, I'm just kind of wondering what kind of art would be displayed?
So, a lot of, a lot of art would be personal, but as well as I'd like to bring more people in, you know, in the sense of like bringing, you know, showcasing more art. Recently, I did an art show called Step in Traditions downtown at a shop called Golden Stag, and one of my best friends hosted it. And we've been in cahoots recently about talking about, because of this space, bringing something like that down there, as well as they have the Inglewood, the big Inglewood Art Building, and they have a lot of gallery footage down there. So it'd be nice to take that show and bring it bigger as well. And with that show, we had tattooers from all over the world showcase a lot of our artwork. And it wasn't just tattoo artwork, it was like everything that someone's about. But I'd like to bring more local, more than anything.
Madam Chair, I have one more question.
Sure.
With this special use permit needed because of your proximity to churches, what kind of outreach have you done, if any?
As of right now, I haven't gone over and introduced myself, just because we got, moved into the building, we started doing all the renovation and stuff like that. As we get closer, I want to go shake hands. I want to get to know everyone that's around me as well as up the street and down the street, because it, I'm one of those people that just like to know my neighbors.
It's a friendly neighborhood.
Yeah.
I don't think you'll have any problem with that.
Yeah.
How long were you down at the lake doing tattoos?
Down in Lake Ozarks, off and on for most of my career.
So, so you don't have a place down there or what, or do you?
Not anymore.
Not anymore?
So, what, the guy that owns the shop that I go down there and work at, it's called Rabbit's Foot Tattoo Parlor, and he's like my dad.
Okay.
So that's where the Good Rabbit comes from, is like rabbit's foot, good rabbit, stuff like that.
Okay, and you've been in Blue Springs how long?
Uh, going on three years now.
Three years?
Yeah.
How many square feet is this building?
Um, well, you, it got divided according to our neighbor, and it's like under like 1,100 square feet.
Okay, so.
Yeah, it got divided in like a weird little L section.
So it's like doubled in size what you have now then?
Yeah, like, not, not 4,000 square feet, like 1,100 square feet.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, there's different offices in there.
Yeah.
I just wonder how big your area's gonna be. One, this is a question for staff. If he brings in more artists, do they have to be approved through us, or is it, doesn't matter, once they get the license?
As long as he's contained in that square footage that, that you've zoned, right?
I mean, it's zoned for that use.
Okay, so I just want to make sure.
Special use isn't required for the gallery aspects.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure that I understand.
I know everyone has to be, come, go through the Independence Health Department.
Well, the Health Department, I just want to make sure that you're able to bring more, because it sounds like you want to grow, so you plan on bringing some more artists in, is what it sounds like, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's it, thanks.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none. Commissioners, do you have any more questions of the applicant or of the staff? If not, I would entertain a motion. Oh, I'm closing the public hearing first. Now, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve case 24-200-01, special use permit at 10609 East Winter Road.
Is there a second?
I second.
You got three.
Whew, that was a photo finish.
Okay, raise your hand, quick.
Yeah, no kidding. Okay, we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 24-200-01, special use permit at 10609 East Winter Road, has been approved. Good luck. You've picked a perfect neighborhood.
I'm about to.
Thank you.
Good luck with your baby.
Yeah. All right, next case is case number 24-200-02, special use permit at 4516 South Nolan Road. We're ready for a report.
This case, case 24-2002, tattoo shop, Bear Skin Tattoo LLC. Applicant Carlotta Vitti. And as you can see, this is right at the intersection of East 45th and Nolan Road, actually at that strip center that's at the southwest corner of that. So the notification area are all these commercial lots that surround that property within 185 feet or along Nolan Road in the vicinity of the South Nolan Shopping Center there. And as you can see from the aerial photo, where we are in relation to the commercial corridor there, along Nolan Road and the Nolan Fashion Square located to the south. And here's that strip again, showing the tenant space. Okay, this zoning area is C2 general commercial in all directions for about a block. Background, section 1441601B of the Unified Development Ordinance limits the total number of body art services, which includes tattoo shops, to one for every 15,000 residents of the city. And as we said in the earlier case, as of the last census, the city has that capped at eight. And so that was, previous one was the, was the fifth, and this would be the sixth. Further section, 141601A of the UDO, requires that body art services in C2 districts require a special use permit when they are within 500 feet of a residential use, a church, school, a public park. Of course, this property lies right across the street from Nolan Road Baptist Church and thus requires a special use permit. The physical characteristics of the property, the property itself is a rectangular lot that sits at the, on the west side of Nolan Road. The building on the property, though, faces north and contains several commercial spaces. The characteristics of the area, this property is surrounded by commercial uses, and then you have the Nolan Road Baptist Church there across the street. It's the only non-residential, residential commercial use adjacent to the property, although there's wooded area there to the west as well. Analysis, a consistency with the Independence for All strategic plan. This proposed use would help support the economic prosperity of this segment of the Nolan Road corridor by the occupation of a unit in the existing commercial building. The comprehensive plans guiding land use principles, the city comprehensive plan recommends business park uses for this site. This segment of Nolan Road. This sec, segment of Nolan Road has had commercial zoning and uses for decades, and that's expected for the foreseeable future. This site has no apparent historic or archaeological sites. Public utilities, again, this is a developed area, so all utilities are present. Review criteria, recommendations and decisions on special use permit applications must be based on consideration of all the following criteria. The first, um, again, compatibility with the proposed use and the character of the neighborhood. The area surrounding this property is entirely C-two and has a mix of various commercial uses. Uh, the building where the applicant is, seeks to locate has primarily been, uh, office and I'd say mostly service and retail uses. Uh, the rental of one of these units in the building should have no effect on the character of the Nolan Road corridor here. Uh, number two, the extent to which the proposed use is compatible with the adjacent zoning and issues. As mentioned previously, there's an assortment of businesses in the area, and this use should have minimal impact on the area. Number three, the impact of the proposed use on public facilities. All public facilities are in place here, and the proposed business is not a significant consumer of, of utility services. Uh, number four, suitability of the property for permitted uses to which it has been restricted under the applicable zoning district regulations. Uh, the special use permit would allow an additional land use not already permitted by right in the C-two district. And also the fact that it's when, within five hundred feet of Nolan Road Baptist there to the, to the, the west, or to the east. Number five, the extent to which the proposed use may injure or detrimentally affect the use or enjoyment of the property in the area. Based upon the site's zoning and its long use as a commercial property, it should not affect these issues. Uh, number six, the extent to which the proposed use will create extensive stormwater runoff, air pollution, noise pollution, or other environmental harm. Well, this is a developed site, uh, existing impervious surface, so no changes to drainage area. It's a small tenant space within the existing strip center, so it shouldn't create any additional environmental situations. Um, number seven, the extent to which there is a need for the use in the community. Uh, the maximum number of body art locations is restricted to eight. And like we said at the beginning of the last, um, case, we were at four. With its passage becomes five, this is six. If approved with, um, a special use permit, the application appears to satisfy, uh, the requirements of section fourteen four sixteen of the Unified Development Ordinance. Number nine, the extent to which, uh, public facilities and services are available and adequate to meet the demand for facilities and services generated by the proposed use. Um, again, this is a long existing commercial property, and all public facilities are in place. Uh, number ten, uh, conformance of the proposed use to the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans and policies. Uh, the city's updated comprehensive plan envisions business park uses again for this site. And number eleven, the extent to which the use will impact suitability or revitalization of a given area. Uh, the special use permit would allow this business to use a vacant unit space, um, in the existing building. So to sustain the commercial base in the area. So, we're standing basically south of, um, the main part of the Nolan South Shopping Center, looking at this annex across, um, what is this, Forty-Fifth Street. And then looking back east at Forty-Fifth Street, back toward Arby's and, um, Nolan Road Baptist. And then back toward Hy-Vee. And then this is down at the other end of the building, looking at the backside of the, of the Nolan Fashion Square. And the roadway back to those apartments, they're back toward the railroad track. And this is north up Nolan Road. Mama Gardens there to the left. And then looking at the Baptist Church, catty-cornered from this property. Directly at Arby's across the street. A little closer toward Hy-Vee and the Louvre Place. And then back south toward Forty Highway up the hill. And a little closer to the unit space here, a little closer. Recommendation, staff recommends approval of this special use permit request with the following conditions. Number one, this special use permit is limited to the unit, whoop, that is the wrong slide.
You got the wrong address on there.
Yes, um, the address should be.
Forty-five sixteen.
Forty-five sixteen South Nolan Road. And again, does not apply to the entire property.
Our papers, Ryan, it was just your slide.
What?
Our papers find, it was just your slide.
It was just a slide, okay. And number two, the applicant will obtain and maintain all applicable, uh, city and state licenses and comply with all health requirements.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Okay, will the applicant come forward, please, and state your name and your address?
Um, my name is Carlotta Vitti, my address is nineteen three oh five East Ponca Terrace, Independence, Missouri, six four oh five six.
Thank you.
I had a.
You can put that down if you want to.
I had a question, because my boyfriend is the one who is the owner of the business and the one that's leasing the property. I did the application on behalf of him. Is he the one that needs to be talking, or does it matter? Or do we need to change the name on the application, or does it matter at all? No?
Staff.
Um, that's fine.
Okay, um, so my boyfriend, he studied art in Cuba. Um, he came here, he's, he's wanting to do something here that correlates, that he can also make a living off of, um, with what he's studied in Cuba. So that's why he's tattooing, he's been tattooing for four years. Um, he wants to focus more on portraits, 'cause what he studied in Cuba was human figure. He is gonna be working appointment-based as well, it's gonna be a private studio. He's not gonna have any other tattoo artists there aside from himself. It's always gonna be just him and his client there. And, um, I don't really know, I don't know what to say, I don't know.
I love your cover letter, no drugs, no drama.
I just feel like a lot of people have a big misconception on tattoo, you know, being this dark. And it's gonna be completely different than what most people are used to. He wants to be, it's gonna be a modern, different style. It's not gonna be like the dark skulls and what everyone's used to as far as the tattoo studio goes. He's not gonna be offering any piercings or branding, it's just gonna be strictly tattooing. And then once he gets to where he wants to be, he wants to only do, focus on portraits. He also wants to do, um, he wants to try to offer art classes as well there, since that's what he went to school for. And he wants to, um, be able to teach other tattoo artists that don't have the same background that he does. You know, how to, how to draw and, and expand their, their, um, horizon in the industry, so.
Nice. Commissioners, any questions? I think we're good?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Any more questions of staff before I close the public hearing? Closed the public hearing, and I would entertain a, uh, discussion or a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve case twenty-four dash two hundred dash zero two, special use permit, forty-five sixteen South Nolan Road.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Everybody's sitting back, I'm like, oh god, okay. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number twenty-four dash two hundred dash zero two, special use permit at forty-five sixteen South Nolan Road has been approved. Okay, next case is number twenty-four dash one seven five dash zero one, UDO Amendment number sixty-four Auto Repair. Staff, will you give us a report, please?
Thank you. As you, as some of you might remember, I know we have a couple of new members. Uh, just a few months ago, we did a UDO Amendment to our automotive uses. And in there, there was many different things, a lot of things, including specifications, site requirements. Uh, one of the things in there was a separation requirement between other automotive uses. It is the seven hundred and fifty-foot separation. The intent there was to try to minimize congregations of auto uses along some of our corridors that are undergoing some redevelopment. However, we recently had inquiry about what we know traditionally as the Miracle Mile along Nolan Road. Uh, we had a applicant, the, the intent of that other code actually excluded, uh, new car lots. The ones that you're typically seeing up along Nolan Road. And so the intent there was to not really have a negative impact on those businesses. Uh, we did have a inquiry about being able to take one of the ancillary uses of the new car lot, which they do other things. They have collision repair centers, they have car washes, and they also have, um, used car sales in those as well. They were wanting to expand, and they would not be able to do it in their existing lot, so they were looking at a nearby lot. Uh, this code would have, if taken strictly, prevent, would, would prevent that. So the intent was to really not have that impact, especially along the Miracle Mile. So we kinda take a look at what is the best way to mitigate that impact. You know, sometimes when you're putting together these codes, you're, you do the best you can trying to anticipate the types of projects and how that could impact. Uh, this was just one that we didn't really consider, uh, in terms of, um, you know, an existing new car lot wanting to do an expansion, for example, of their collision center. And so, uh, we felt the best way to mitigate that would be to basically just exclude that portion of the Miracle Mile, which is essentially between Thirty-third Street and Aberdeen Street. And that is essentially what the purpose of this code section update is. Uh, with that, I have no further information.
Commissioners, any questions?
Ask a question.
So, you don't anticipate any objections later on down the road? If some other person says, "Well, there's no room on the Miracle Mile, but I'm over here, and now I can't open this thing up." Because it's.
I mean, it is entirely possible that others might try to, you know, ask for other corridors. Uh, keep in mind that the intent of the separation specification in that previous code was really to prevent some of those other areas from, uh, really being bombarded with a lot of the used car lots. It really had a, an impact on a lot of the used car lots, that was kinda one of the things that we were trying to minimize. And so, uh, the thing about this corridor that makes it different is really, this is where we have our large number of cluster of new car lots, which again, was really not the intent to have a negative impact on those businesses. Uh, we do know that Nolan Road is, you know, it's a, that corridor has many different used car lots, many different automotive uses. It will more than likely remain that way, um, you know, for a very long time. Uh, but when we look at some of our existing corridors, Twenty-four Highway, Forty Highway, Twenty-third Street, some of the places where we're seeing some redevelopments and new developments that we would like to, uh, you know, have a positive impact on one of our twenty forty plans as we look forward. Uh, that was really the intent of that previous code. So, is it possible that, you know, others may have that desire? Um, it is, but, you know, here, I think the intent really was never to actually impact this area in the first place.
I understand that, but, so essentially, you're, you're just kicking the can down the road until, till that comes up, which I'm, I'm okay with, I'm just asking.
I mean, I wouldn't, that, that really isn't the intent here. I, I think really what the, the intent for this code update is to essentially correct what our intentions were, or to make it more clear what the intentions were with the original code adoption.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
I think I have, I need a clarification, and it might require Mitch. Based on your concern, the language, is it making an exception just for the Miracle Mile, new car lots? Are we actually changing the wording to only include used car lots? If I remember right, we did a, um, this was kinda part of some of the areas around Winter Road and Twenty-four, where there were just a lot of, lack of a better word, really ugly, messy, used car repair areas.
Yes, so the actual language is auto uses. So it doesn't really, it doesn't really distinguish between what types in this section of the code.
So, to Mitch, would it not, I'm kinda concerned about down the road too, of carving out just for one area and making it really difficult for others. So if this is a, applying to new car lots really only is who we're fixing it for.
Well, let me clarify.
Would that not be appropriate?
So the original code excluded new car lots from those uses. So that was the intent.
Okay.
With the recent inquiry about doing more of an off-site upgrade to those new car lot. The actual code section refers to auto uses as far as the separation. So what this would do would exclude that section of Nolan Road for those auto uses within that seven hundred and fifty-foot separation. So essentially, between Thirty-third Street and Aberdeen Street, those auto uses would be able to be closer than seven hundred and fifty feet.
So it's the distance.
It's the distance, yeah.
Can it be interpreted?
Mitch, can it be interpreted any other way?
That's not really a legal question, that's more of a question for somebody objectively looking at the language change. I think it's fairly straightforward.
Okay.
And I understood what they meant. But I can't understand why there might be some confusion at times. But again, that's, that's not necessarily a legal question, that's more of an objective person looking at it and being a bit confused.
Are we ready to hear from the applicant?
Sure.
All right, will the applicant, please come forward?
Uh, this is no applicant, it would just be those four again.
Any other questions?
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say something again. If you look at Twenty-third Street, there's a lot of car businesses on there now. So.
Well, there, this is just saying Nolan Road, they can be closer than seven hundred and fifty feet. If they go to Twenty-third Street, they gotta be seven hundred and fifty feet apart. That's the difference.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, but I mean, I understand what they're trying to do here. Ryan, can we go ahead and tell them what they're trying to do here, or, I mean?
So with the applicant, we, we had an applicant that came forward, um, and it, if I can mention, it was Cable Dahmer that came forward with the collision center project. They were wanting to put it off-site, and by doing so. And by doing so, the strict following of this code would prevent that because they, they do have an existing collision center on their site. But to expand that, they wanted to basically go to a different lot. And because that lot was within 750 feet of a used car lot, the strict following of this code would prevent that.
That's why you guys need to hear that.
But that really wasn't the intent when we were trying to exclude new car lots. Maybe that makes it a little bit clearer.
Back to the page. Yeah. And it's, and it's just between 33rd Street and Aberdeen.
Right.
Correct.
That's all we're looking at.
Which I think it's also important to note, too, that there's many used car, or not used car, there are many car type uses that are within the 750-foot already in that corridor.
Okay. Would you like to speak towards this? Okay. Give us your name.
Robert Merritt, 1600 Southeast Dalton Lee Summit, Missouri. I'm the COO for Cable Dahmer Automotive Group and we're the applicant that he keeps referring to. And initially, when we came with it, you know, we, we were kind of sideswiped by this entire ordinance. We had no clue about it and we have a lot of real estate on Nolan Road that uses automotive uses. So it came quite, pretty much as a shock to us that somehow this had gotten, it's a very restrictive ordinance, in my opinion. When you go through it and read it, and he says it, it has all the automotive uses. So what nailed this, what, what stopped this development was literally there's a budget rent-a-car across the street. So it had nothing to do with a used car lot or a new car lot or any of that. It was a budget rent-a-car was preventing us from developing this site into a body shop. So that's where we got brought up is if this ordinance could be amended to allow in that Nolan Road Miracle Mile corridor, which is traditionally, it's been there since, you know, 1958 or something to that effect, right? So I feel like in the, in the city, people know what the Miracle Mile is. We're gonna define it, you know, between 33rd and Aberdeen, I believe. But my one concern with the amendment that they want to do is it is restricted to automotive repair. And my, um, my understanding is that the ordinance in its original form was to discourage all of the used vehicle lots that have been popping up. I think someone like said a number of, like, there's 69 used vehicle lots in the city. And it, that, that, that does sound like a lot. But there in that Nolan Road corridor, we have a lot of regional and national chains that are used vehicle dealerships that are, that have a good image, like Drive Time and like Right Way. And, and literally if this ordinance would have been in effect, we couldn't have built the Right Way building, you know, three years ago when we did. And, and our opinion, Cable Dahmer's opinion of Nolan Road is the more people that are shopping on Nolan Road, the better it is for everybody. But in my opinion, the ordinance, the way it's passed, it basically restricts automotive uses in the entire city. You can't go 750 feet and not hit an automotive use. It's, you can't be 750 feet to a gas station, a car rental lot, a used car lot, a tow lot, a repair station. So even just looking at this ordinance, we, you could just keep moving and you still will hit a 750-foot radius where you can't do anything automotive. So being in the automotive industry, that, that concerned me. So that's why we asked for this exception. My one question that I would like to ask is if in that Miracle Mile corridor, we could also remove the restriction of the used vehicle lots as well. I, I agree, you know, you don't want them all over the place, but if you don't give them somewhere to go, they're gonna go to Blue Springs or they're gonna go to Lee Summit. And we're gonna lose those regional and national, you know, unfortunately CarMax is already, well, it's already in Independence. But those are the type of used car dealerships that could come to Nolan Road and there's still a little bit of real estate left to do that. And the way this ordinance is written, even if we pass the current amendment that I'm asking, that we're asking for to allow automotive repair, which is what we have to have to do, a body shop, a collision center. If, you know, another regional used car dealership comes to town and wants to put something on Nolan Road, they, they can't because they can't be within 750 feet of essentially anything. A car wash is on there, too. So you can't be within 750 feet of a car wash and put a car lot. Or, I, I mean, it, it, it's very, very restrictive, in, in my opinion. So Miracle Mile, I, I would ask for vehicle repair and used vehicle just to give someone somewhere to go if someone does want to come to Independence.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I want to thank you for saying what I obviously couldn't say but was thinking. So I was a little surprised. We treat tattoo shops and the other ones like they need a special use permit. So why can't we do that?
We will have to apply for a special use permit in this particular location because it's C2. And for the current ordinance, we need C3 to do heavy automotive repair, which is what Collision Center is classified as. So that is something we're working with. It would have to be, it would have to be a PUD. PUD? Yeah. Yeah, I didn't remember what it was. So it's C2. We will still have to come through this again with our PDP, asking for a PUD. And, and our intent is to follow this process all the way through. As soon as it gets through council, we're gonna come back to this with what we want to do on the piece of land on Nolan Road that we intend on purchasing and then follow it up through planning. But anyone else would have to do the same thing because of the zone, it's C2. So they would have to have something.
And you mentioned, you know, a car wash, just gasoline sales, a quick trip.
Yeah.
Is across from Rich, Rich Line, probably within 750 feet. So, and then I don't even, I don't see it on there, but there's an auto parts store across from there, too. So...
I don't think that auto parts store was in the restrictions.
I don't think it is either.
No.
But I still think a special use or something like that where there's some discretion on what goes in there. Because sometimes it makes sense to do things like that. But that's just my two cents, Ruth.
Do you have any other questions, this gentleman? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't mind the UDO that, that we have approved for automobiles because I think at some point we had to stop the progression on 40, 23rd, 24 and even give Nolan Road some tools to make sure Nolan Road looks the way the city manager and mayor and council envision it looking. So I don't mind a very strict UDO at this point because they can always come before us and, and do this. And then same with the special use. Yes, it's a few more hoops to walk through. But I don't think that's a bad idea right now while we're trying to get control of the other inlets in the city.
Say that again, like, they don't have to?
Having such a strict UDO, I don't think is bad for us right now.
They have to come forward if they want them. Well, they came forward and now they're trying to change the ordinance.
Just for that section, though?
Yeah.
Yeah, which I think is...
Well, I'm not saying throw that out. I'm just saying that, I don't know, just thinking ahead.
Yeah. I don't think it's bad that everybody has to either come through us or council just to, to make sure that this is how, again, the mayor and city manager and council want Independence to develop.
Well, you're keeping them from coming forward, except on the Miracle Mile. Except he had another, he's gonna come forward again because there's another exception he wants. So I guess we just keep listening to him.
I think, I think to keep in mind, it's, just because somebody may ask for a code update, doesn't mean they get it.
Exactly.
Doesn't mean we bring that forward.
Well, I wouldn't say you were just rolling over. Yes, I understand what you're saying. But she's saying that, well, they're gonna have to come forward and you're gonna have to say no. Or we're gonna make an exception or we're gonna change the code.
You know, we, we get a lot of people that don't like, you know, our permitting portion of the code. That doesn't mean that we lobby or anything to move that forward. Typically, we take direction from either city management, council, or this body for those types of things.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Now, Rick, so this, we're okay with what it says auto repair or should we have it changed to something?
Well, what you have before you is for auto repair.
Okay. So, but like you were saying, there's other restrictions. There's, there's no other restrictions, is there, in the Miracle Mile area?
Again, it, all the other code sections do remain in place for things like used car lots, etc.
Okay, so it says new car lots were exempt.
Correct.
Okay. Do we need to add the used car portion on here?
That would not be the case in front of you.
Okay. I just want to make sure because he was talking about that.
So I think that would be a whole different...
That would be, yeah, that would be an entirely different case.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this? Is there anybody here who would like to speak against this? Hearing none. Any other questions of the staff? Then close the public hearing. Any more discussion, questions? Or I'd entertain...
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion we approve case 24-175-01, UDO amendment number 64, auto repair.
Is there a second?
I second.
Sorry, I haven't had Wright Ferguson yet. Okay. We're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ash, Ashbaugh.
I'm staying.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 24-175-01, UDO amendment number 64, auto repair has been approved. Okay. Thank you. Before I forget, we need to make sure that in the minutes for next time that Commissioner Ashbaugh is here. Okay. Just to make sure.
Yeah, I have him arriving at 6:04.
Oh, hey, yeah. That's a good one. Here. All right. Is there anything for roundtable or the greater good?
Yes. All right, so some months ago, commission requested kind of an update on our housing developments and where we are at in terms of the housing study. As you know, we've approved quite a few different types of housing developments over the last several years. And what this is, is essentially a compilation of everything since 2019. Some of these are actually just a little bit before the housing study. We'll talk about that as we go through some of these slides. You can kind of see just the number of different types of developments. We've had apartment complexes, we've had senior housing, we've had some duplex housing, fourplex housing, and some single family as well. I'm just gonna go through these slides fairly quickly. If you have some questions, we can, you know, just throw it out there. But I'm just gonna go over some of the things that we have approved so you kind of know where we're at. This is the Azure's Luxury Apartments. This is located over on Jackson Drive and East 39th Street. This one had 280 units to it. It was approved early in 2019. One, two, and three bedrooms. The estimated average rent, now understand, too, with these estimations of prices, these are really pulled from their websites. They do upload, update those prices regularly, sometimes weekly. And when I take the average, I kind of took the average of the one, two, and three bedrooms. So obviously you may have a one-bedroom that's $1,000 a month and you may have a three-bedroom that's over $2,000. But the average based on, you know, most of their website data, which is probably about a month old at this point. So take that for what it's worth. I think it's interesting to see it, just to see as you go through these slides. Many of the apartment complexes are really about the same, very close to the same price. This project's obviously complete. Sorry. Next slide, Trinity Woods. Again, this one's over on Valley View Parkway, a little blue. This one had 240 units. This was approval late 2019. Again, this one also has one, two, and three bedrooms. And again, if you calculate it out, it's about $1,500, almost average monthly rent. This one's, project's completed as well. The Ed Rondeck Apartments. This one was, is over by Bass Pro Drive. This one's got 285 units, approved early 2021. One and two bedrooms. And again, average rent prices there, about the same, 1,500. This one's nearing completion. Most of the, pretty much all the infrastructure's in place. It's really just getting the building completed and finalized. This one is a post-housing study, the Alton Apartments. This is over by Cracker Nick and 39th Street South. This one had 358 units, approved late 2023. This is one and two-bedroom proposed units. The proposed rent average was 1,600. This is currently in design. And so nothing has actually started yet, but it's in design. This is the ERA Apartments or Era Apartments that North Point had proposed over on Witsch Chapel and I-70. This one had 320 units, approved late 2023. One and two-bedroom units, proposed rents is approximately 1,600. Again, in design. And this was post-housing study as well. So this is our senior housing development. We only had the one. It used to be Redwood Apartments. They're actually calling this now Arabella Apartments. This is located on Artemis and Jackson Drive. This one had 182 units, approved early 2022. Four, four and six-unit buildings. Average monthly proposed rents are 18 to $2,200 a month. This one's actually beginning construction. They started doing some earthmoving and this was obviously post-housing study as well. Big B Acres, this is a duplex housing development on 24 Highway in Salem, kind of way northeast of the city. This one had 78 units, again, approved early 2022. Two-unit houses are duplex housing. Approximate proposed rents there were 1,400. Construction is just beginning. Again, grade work on this one. It was also post-housing study. Sterling Village, this was a fourplex housing development. This one's actually quite an old one. They came back for a revised preliminary plat back in 2022. This is over by Harvard and Sterling. There were a few of these units already built. This had changed hands multiple times by different developers or different owners. And it did finally get completed. There are 52 units, four-house units. Proposed rents are 1,400 plus. Don't really know. They're, they're just literally completed these. And I believe they're being rented out right now. Again, this is a post-housing study development. This is Newtown at Harmony. You guys might be familiar with this. We had phase one done, which is kind of the center section there. But recently, they, they did a phase one A, a phase two, and a phase three. This has mostly single. There's a cup, there's some two-family housing in there as well. But it's a unique PUD development over on Truman and Fisher Road. This one had 105 lots, approval late 2021. Proposed housing prices in here are between 200 and 400,000 plus. This site is complete. Obviously, not all the lots have been built on, but the infrastructure and everything is in, complete for building permits. Consequently, too, there are multiple other phases of this that will be... Consequently, too, there are multiple other phases of this that will be submitted, I'm sure, at some point, but they haven't actually submitted for any kind of plan review. So all these projects have been submitted for plan review and/or permitting. Obviously, there are some of these, like Newtown, that are going to have future phases, but I did not include those on the slide. Regency Heights 10, single-family housing, this is over on Bunshu and Powell. This one had 75 lots, approved late 2022. Proposed prices, they're, the site's actually complete. You know, again, it's an estimate as to what these price values are going to be. So, but this is also a post-housing study. I believe they're starting to pull permits on these. Yeah, the lots and the infrastructure are completed, and I believe they've got some, they've got several building permits already ongoing. But again, I don't really know what the prices are going to be until they start advertising those. Meadowbrook Estates 2, this is a single-family housing development, it was over on Artimize and Eureka Road, had 46 lots. Approved early 2020, proposed cost, again, this one hasn't actually started. This one, I believe the preliminary plat actually expired, so they'll have to come back and do an update on the preliminary plat. But this was also post-housing study. Little Blue Estates, Phase 1. There's, this is just Phase 1, there's going to be multiple phases of this. I believe there's a total of 89 lots in this development, but right now, they have plans approved for 23 lots. This is over off Necessary Drive and Quail Drive. Again, pending construction and post-housing study. Tybuk Estates, 1B, single-family housing as well. Proposed future phases as well, this is on Powell Road and East A Street. 36 lots in this one, approved late 2023. Pending construction, as I mentioned, post-housing study as well. Timber Creek Ranch 3, again, another single-family development. Bunshu and Powell, 23 lots on Phase 3, single-family, pending construction, and post-housing study as well. And then, in that same thing, they've actually submitted for Timber Creek Ranch 4, which is just another phase of this same development. That one's got 14 lots, I believe Phase 5, which they have not submitted for yet, has an additional 25 lots. This one's under review currently, and again, post-housing study. So with all those developments, basically, the question has been, where are we at in terms of the housing study? What did it say in terms of inventory? Where do we need to be at? So in 2021 is really when the housing study started. It was completed in January of 2022. The study looked at many different things. I believe it's on our website, if you guys need a copy or a link to it, I can provide that to you. It's got a lot of good information in it. And they use basically the housing trends, they use job growths, they did market analysis, migration studies, as well as affordability. There's a few other factors that they looked at when they came up with the housing study. And basically, they had to come up with an inventory, where do we see independence for the year, for 20 years into the future? And there is, you know, a lot of that information kind of spelled out, a lot of graphs and charts you can take a look at. But just summarizing where we're at, there's a section in there that talks about unit demands over 20 years, basically taking all that information in. And you can see from this slide, basically, they said for the next 20 years, independents would be looking at an additional need for 3,915 single-family homes, 580 duplex-type housing, 325 fourplexes, 980 small multifamily 5 to 9plex, which is kind of a rarity, we don't see too many of that. And then the large multifamily, 20-plus unit apartments, that would essentially be your apartment complexes. 750 total units, they did break that down into another category called workforce and market rate housing. Basically, out of the workforce, that was a price range between 750 per month and 1,400. So that would be, for example, like a one-bedroom studio or a one-bedroom efficiency apartment, it may be a one-bedroom type apartment. But you have to also realize that many of these apartments have three or four different types of one-bedrooms. So they may have a one-bedroom that's a lot larger than a studio type 1. And so, really, what we consider the workforce housing is that 1,400 or less. And then, when we talk about market rate housing, those would be more of your larger one-bedrooms and two- and three-bedroom types housing, where it goes from 1,400 or more. And then, the housing study talked about having an additional 1,400 senior housing development units. So when you take all that together, what we've currently approved since 2019, and just look at where we're at, and again, a little bit of variations here, because there's some existing developments that have been approved prior to 2019 that are still building out. But just taking it from the housing study to what we have that was post-housing study approved. Single-family housing, you can see we've added 217 units, we've added about 78 duplex units and 52 fourplexes. We haven't added any of the 5 to 9plex multifamilies. And then, when you take a look at the breakout of the apartments, we've added 418 of the 450 workforce housing, which leaves approximately 32 units. And then, for the market rate housing, out of the 300 units the housing study said we needed, we've added 252, leaving 48. Senior housing, we've added 182, which is leaving 1,218. So I think the take there is that while we have plenty of room to be adding other types of housing, the one that we have, we're hitting our ceiling on, is the apartments. Now, that being said, a lot of things have changed since post-COVID. You know, one of the things that we have seen with developments in terms of the housing that you see, a lot of these have been approved. They've been in the works, there's some currently in the works. But there's been some hesitant, you know, hesitation by builders and developers to start building. They don't want to necessarily be sitting on, you know, $400,000 worth of inventory on housing. They're kind of waiting for the market, they're looking at, what we've heard, again, I'm not an expert in any of this stuff, but some of the things that we hear from developers and builders is, you know, they're looking to see those interest rates fall. And at that point, you know, maybe even construction loan rates, to be able to start building out some of these developments that have been approved, and some that have actually started as well. So, one of the things that we've seen, obviously, changes in, you know, housing. We've seen a lot of arguments for, you know, generational changes. You know, people perhaps wanting to be in apartment-type developments that have many amenities. I think there's an argument to be made when we start looking at the way apartments were made in years past versus apartments that we're seeing now. You're seeing apartments now with some pretty incredible amenities that you don't see in some of the older developments. And so, you see people interested in that, you know, maybe they don't want to take care of a yard or a house or a roof. But on the other hand, you also hear the arguments that people may want to live in apartments, but then eventually want to move into a single-family home that they can afford. And so, you know, there's a lot of changes in the market, there's a lot of changes in philosophy. And so, I can tell you, we were fortunate enough to be able to get funding to update this portion of the housing study, which is ongoing right now. And so, what we're going to see is how, you know, what the future is going to look like with some of the new data and methodologies for the market and what's happening in housing today. And see how that plays out with some of these numbers, maybe they'll change, maybe they'll go up, some of them may go down. I would suspect, for example, like senior housing might actually, the demand or the need for senior housing is probably going to go up. But we'll see what happens to a lot of these other metrics. So with that, I know I went through that really quick. If you guys have any questions, the, on that part.
I have a question, Rick. From this group, are there apartment complexes in this packet that are waiting for interest rates to fall?
So I haven't actually heard that about apartment complexes.
Okay.
It's really been the single-family developments that we've heard that type of.
So all of these apartments that are in this packet are planning to go forward and?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
The one that's expiring, when is it expiring?
I believe that one actually already expired.
Oh, okay.
Doesn't necessarily change the, basically, the plats are good for two years, the preliminary plats. And so, since they have not acted upon it and applied for any kind of construction permits on it, it has since left, so.
Okay.
Rick, do we have land out there for 3,500 houses anywhere?
So, yeah, I mean, the argument could be made, you know, east of the city, we probably do. It just really depends, obviously, there's, you have a lot of estate lots, you have a lot of, you know, property owners that are, you know, they have one house on 30 acres or one house on 12 acres. When we did the housing study, we believed that there were room for what we needed in Independence. Now, again, you know, it's kind of like the zoning maps and stuff and the comp plan maps. Could you do it? Probably. What are the logistics of it, you know, in terms of buying out property owners and that type of thing? You know, that's a different question, that's not a question that we really address with the housing study, but.
Well, infrastructure.
Yeah, infrastructure is a big one, you know, obviously, east of the city, you know, sewers, water, where does the water and sewer lines go? So there is a cost, I mean, these developments here, they have access to those utilities. When we start talking about future expansion out east, for example, that is a big factor in terms of how long it may take development to get out there, just because, you know, infrastructure costs are going to go up. And it'll be expensive, more expensive for a developer to try to run utilities out in that direction.
Because the developers got to pay for all that, correct?
Correct.
This is great. This is just so helpful. Because it does feel like sometimes we're in the middle of it, like we're just approving, approving, approving.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the neat thing, when I was putting this thing together, you don't realize how many, and this is not commercial projects or anything like that, this is just the housing. And even though we've seen, you know, Independence isn't growing at the same rate as some of our neighboring cities. I don't think that's a secret. But we do have a lot of developments, it's just they haven't necessarily pulled the trigger yet. And we do have a lot of expansion within some of these developments as well that, when the time is right, we'll probably see those areas build out as well. But yeah, I think when you see it all together and you think, you know, this is really only in the last couple of years, it's probably more than what most people would have thought.
Rick, I have a question, just, it's about the code. Back when I first was on the commission, back in the dark ages, there was commercial, like, living over a commercial building wasn't allowed in the code. Is that changed, or is that still on the book?
No, you can still, like, in a commercial zone district, you can't have living above a commercial. It's, it would be like a mixed-use development.
There's a, you know, there's a, there's a building out in Lee Summit across from the barbecue place and Lowe's out there off Chipman. And there's apartments over commercial. And I know we probably haven't had anybody come and want to do that, but that's why I was asking if that's.
Yeah, it's still allowed in the code to do that in mixed-use developments. Yeah, what we have seen recently are obviously the higher-density apartment complexes. But that is still an option that people can do.
Well, when you think about, like, 40 Highway in Nolan, where that failed strip mall is or whatever it was, that's kind of a good location for something like that. You know, where they can have their own facilities that they, you know, go to and buy stuff from, the grocery stores and all that, but they can live in an apartment complex, so.
Eric, so part of the square redevelopment, there's been talk of opportunity to do a grocery store and apartments above it and things like that around even the square. So I, I think it's definitely a concept that is being explored going forward for providing more housing.
Well, that's, that's good news, I think if done right, it would be very helpful.
That's trending in other cities, I mean, I was in Overland, Hart or Leewood today, and, I mean, there's several of them that are being built like that.
So with that, Daniel Sanchez is with us today from Blumberd Municipal Law. And we've queued up his slides, the question, the next part of this would be, we had some questions about Section 8 housing and how does that work? I'm going to actually go give him this pointer. And he will be able to kind of talk through some of these slides.
Good evening. So this first couple of slides are just kind of a general overview of Section 8 housing in general. Public housing authorities that are now mainly just rental assistance people, they don't really build a whole lot of housing anymore. If they were to want to build, they would have to follow the city's zoning, just like any other contractor. Public housing can't force the city to put Section 8 housing in any one section or any not one section, it has to follow zoning law. But if you allow Section 8 housing in, or if you allow apartments in, you have to allow Section 8 housing into that, too. You can't have a different, oh, which is on my next slide. Oh, there we go. Okay, so, like I said, in areas of the city that are zoned for multifamily dwellings, the city must allow Section 8 housing in them, because it's an equal protection issue. It would be discriminating against people for the way that they're paying for their houses, or for their, you know, rent or whatever.
Mr. Sanchez, is that a calculation based on equal percentage, or just they have to allow some?
They have to allow some, they can't just be excluded. Yeah, so again, no developers, including those that are building Section 8 housing, can put structures in an area that they're not zoned for, so they can't come in and say, hey, you know, over here, we want to put this in, and it's Section 8, and, you know, it's just not allowed. But the city can use zoning to restrict where, where and which parts of the city that it goes into. Most Section 8 housing is not single-family homes, so in any area of the city that's just zoned for that, Section 8 housing really can't go in. So if that was what you guys wanted to do, to like exclude Section 8 from certain parts of the city, you could just zone around it, essentially.
So you're saying that we can go in and make districts that cannot put in Section 8?
Correct, correct, it's, it's not worth it for somebody to put Section 8 housing into a single-family home. So in the areas that are zoned single-family home, that's where you would have no Section 8 housing. Section 8 housing goes into apartments and things like that, townhouses and stuff like that, they're individual units.
So say a subdivision wants to say no Section 8 in their area, they could come up and ask to have it rezoned, is that what you're saying?
Yes, you could rezone, the city could rezone an area to be single-family housing, which would keep apartments of any type out.
Not apartments, Section 8.
Section 8 goes into multifamily dwellings.
Yeah, I think just the nature of R6, for example, would exclude that type of a housing. Does that make sense?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So next, I have the process for how to offer Section 8 housing if you want to become a landlord that does, that does offer Section 8 housing. Basically, any of the apartment complexes in the city, both new and old, that meet eligibility criteria can offer the Section 8 housing. So the decision of the landlord slash apartment owners to accept Section 8 housing is assistance payments. It's their choice whether or not to start offering Section 8 housing in their buildings. So they're going to have to go through a process. And landlords will need to have a potential tenant who is in the move process and already has a housing choice voucher. So it's on the tenants that want to get into Section 8 housing to have already started the process. So it's on the tenants that want to get into Section Eight housing to have already started the process. There's actually a really good website that goes through all of that for landlords and for potential tenants, but I'll get to that in a little bit. Okay, so. The potential tenant will have a packet that they have that comes with their, their voucher. And that's going to have a, a portion for the landlord to fill out, along with a bunch of other forms and, and things that they need to do in order to get that request for tenancy approval through public housing or the housing authority. So again, in addition, they're going to have a whole lot of additional documentation to, that they have to turn in to the housing authority. But again, that website that they have, that I'll get to in a couple of slides, you can upload all of that there. It's a pretty easy website. And there's actually an online video that helps with filling it out. I just didn't think putting a video in here would be a good use. So these are the things that the landlord is going to have to provide that go with the packet and that, once the tenant gives it to them, these are the additional things in addition to filling out the paperwork that comes with the tenants. So they have to, you know, they have to be current on the Jackson County property tax and have received that, the proof of ownership of the complex, W nine. If they have a property manager, they have to have the, they turn in the property management agreement that they have with that property manager, direct deposit, because the housing authority will directly pay for the tenant's housing assistance once this gets going. Housing subsidies are limited, though. Currently, Independence Public, the Independence Housing Authority has no openings, no waitlist, or either assisted rent or even actual apartments that are Section Eight. There's no way to get on the waitlist. I tried calling over there and got voicemail for everybody and, so I, I couldn't tell you how long that waitlist is going to be closed. So after the landlord fills out this request for the R F T A, the housing authority is going to go through and decide if the landlord's proposed rent is reasonable. And that's reasonable in comparison with other similar units in the marketplace and not higher than rents of those that are paying without housing choice vouchers. So that's basically what the reasonable for. They will also conduct an inspection of the apartments to make sure that they're up to, you know, nice standards. I actually, that's on the next slide. These are, these are the things that they are looking for. It's pretty long, twenty pages, I think. So I didn't print one of these out for each of you guys, but I have an example of the actual inspection form that they will use to, to inspect the apartments for the various things that they have. So the apartment complex has to maintain these housing quality standards throughout the entire time that they are Section Eight, offering Section Eight housing. Sorry. So HUD's currently using a program called INSPIRE. I don't know if you guys have heard of it, but it's a national standards for physical inspection of real estate that they're starting to try and implement across the board so that we have uniformed Section Eight inspections across the country. Because it's been more of a local, like, inspection of the housing authority with their choices on it. It's being tested on a voluntary basis because they're trying to nationalize those inspections. I didn't know what thermal environment controls were, so I have that in my notes, that it's the heating system, that they have a safe heating system in there. I was really unsure of what that was. I had to look that up. Those two logos on the side are of what's called Bob AI. Bob AI, you can't link because it's just bob.ai. There's no dot com or anything on it, so it doesn't really link right, but that is a great website. It's a one-stop shop for both landlords and tenants to both advertise their apartments as Section Eight housing, to find tenants. There's a part where the landlord can like locate tenants type thing, and then for tenants to find landlords that are offering Section Eight housing so they can go to them with their housing voucher and say, hey, I'm in the move process, I would like to rent your apartment. Landlords have to sign up for an account. And there's a great YouTube video that explains how to create and manage an account, how to add legal entities for the landlord's units, and walks through the affordability calculator tool. So there's a specific tool that the landlords need to use in order to make it affordable and offer the correct rents in order to do Section Eight housing. But again, it's the tenant who has to initiate the Section Eight rental process by finding an apartment and providing the landlord with the part of the packet that they need. So to qualify for assistance, a family or an individual's income must be less than half the median of the surrounding area. So below fifty percent of the median income of the KC metro area is what they have to, in order to meet the initial qualification to get any kind of assistance. They also have very low income, which is less than thirty percent, and they get priority and they get more help. Also, the housing authority prioritizes people over age sixty-two with low income and households that have disabilities, but that's not just, you still have to have the low-income requirement. You can't just be over sixty-two and get housing, Section Eight housing help or have a disabled member of your family get Section Eight housing help.
Where do we find what that medium income for the greater Kansas City area might be?
I would, I can, I can get, I can find it for you guys and get it back to you.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Is it the greater Kansas City area or would it be Independence? Because it, there's a, there's a significant difference.
Right, and part of the problem with that is I couldn't get ahold of Independence Public Housing Authority, so I'll look into that and make sure I take care of figuring that out.
I have a connection for you, if you'd like the Independence person.
Oh, yeah, I would love that.
Because we, we have an idea of what our median income is here.
I'll get it to you.
Yeah, you can tell us.
It's forty-eight.
Is it forty-eight? I thought it was fifty-two.
Oh, is it fifty-two?
I don't know. I thought it had gone up. Yeah. So half of that.
Yeah. And that's what I have, unless you guys have more questions. Oh, also, I also brought these two for you guys. This is a frequently asked question on the housing quality standards and what they're inspecting for and things like that, they're looking in the apartment complexes. And then this is for landlords, if they want to become a, you know, a, a Section Eight landlord. Just kind of some questions and stuff for them to get, because I didn't know if you guys had people coming to you saying, hey, we want to have Section Eight housing or.
I don't think we've had anybody in a while.
So I don't know who this question is for, so I like clarification. So currently, you said there is currently no Section Eight housing available.
Not in Independence, no. The, the waitlist is closed, you can't even get on the waitlist for it.
So is it a function? Is it even makes sense? Is it something that a city housing can put out a RFQ or RFP looking for people who might want to provide Section Eight?
So again, I think that's a question that I need to ask somebody in the public housing authority.
Okay.
Because that's just, I don't, I don't know why. I figure with all of these apartments, looking at Rick's presentation, you can have plenty of Section Eight housing if, if there's a need for it in the city. You know, a third of each of those apartments and, because it doesn't have to be like, that's a Section Eight building. It has to be there's Section Eight housing in that building, there's normal apartments, normal rents, there's Section Eight rents. Because all it is is a method of payment, essentially, and how it gets paid for.
But the landlord has to do a lot of work.
He, he does to get it going.
Right.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think from my understanding of it, the landlord has to decide if they even want to do it.
Yeah.
You can have applicants, but it's up to the landlord if they wish to even do it.
And I, I suspect that public housing will probably say, we don't have any landlords, all the landlords that are doing it are, are full, is my guess.
How much Section Eight product do we have here? Do you know? I know.
I don't know off the top of my head. I would have to.
Basically, that street is Section Eight.
That might be a question. If Daniel can get ahold of the housing authority, we might be able to answer that.
I just know in Independence, we either have retired senior adults with a great amount of income or we have those that are still working at seventy, seventy-five years of age and they can barely make rent. So I see senior housing slash Section Eight as a huge opportunity to keep individuals in homes or in residences, multi-unit apartments in Independence.
Well, and being senior, being over sixty-two bumps you up to people that aren't. And so I think it's disabilities, senior citizens, and then everybody else in the order that they got there.
I think we need to be really careful about this because Kansas City, Missouri, just as I understand, is now requiring all landlords to provide Section Eight. So whether they want to or not, they have to provide it. So I think we need to be really careful about that. Telling what, telling people what to do with their property that they own is not, is not fair.
No, I, I agree with you. I, I didn't know Kansas City had done that, but that's, that, that would be for Independence City Council to.
But if the landlord wants to go through all the process to do this, to provide Section Eight, that's a whole different story.
Right.
But forcing them to do it is not kosher.
Right.
Rick, is there any way that we could induce an ordinance to update the renters? How do I want to say it? That guide right there that we make all rental homes have that inspection instead of the current inspection that we do? I mean, that's going to make it a lot tougher for them, because.
Okay, say that again.
So basically, I would like to see if we could have the Section Eight inspections for all rental houses in Independence.
So like the short-term inspections would be.
The short, well, not short-term. If you go through that, that's a whole lot different than what Independence does right now. And that's why we have houses that look like we have.
I think that's what Mr. Gomez, excuse me. Mr. Sanchez, that's what you said, that they're testing it and looking that perhaps this could be something that is accepted along
They, they're looking at trying to, so it's, it's been in a volunteer status for, I think it was supposed to end in twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-three. HUD extended that period so that they can continue the study on whether or not this INSPIRE standards are good and if they can implement them universally across the board in the country. Because right now, you go state to state, city to city, Section Eight housing inspections are different.
Since I'm a real estate agent, I'm familiar with the inspection process on home inspections and stuff. And I can tell you that typically they're about eighteen pages long, and this one's longer than that. This one's nineteen pages. And I think you're, if you put the burden of bringing a property up to this level on a landlord, we may not have any rental properties available.
No, then we'll have single houses, single-family houses available for people to buy. I mean, I have properties and I like that. I don't mind it. And I don't see why the rest of people and landlords in Independence should live up to that standard.
I just think we need to make a compromise between, I mean, we need to be careful not to make it too restrictive.
Well, it's not too restrictive, it's just make sure the prop, that is not restrictive, that is just making sure the property is up to standard is what it is. Safe. I mean, always, I mean, our safety standards is they go in and look at smoke detectors, the flu, CO detectors. And I'm thinking maybe flush the toilet, and that's all they do. I mean, they don't check the paint and things like that. I mean, because, or the doors or things like that to make sure they're functioning. And that's, that should be done. So I don't know, Rick, we can do something like that or not. Has anybody talked about that?
I mean, as part of our rental-ready program that we have, I know there's been many debates about that. I don't think what we do is not sufficient for, for the purposes of, you know, being able to provide rentals. I think that's probably a question that we really need to kind of see what happens with HUD and other federal regulatory requirements before we start moving forward in that. But I do know that there has been discussions about being able to beef up some of our inspection requirements for rental properties. But as of right now, I don't have any specifics to offer you.
Rick, do you have, do you have any feel for if it's, if you get better cooperation with somebody who actually lives in the city and owns the property versus somebody who lives outside the city or out of state?
I would say it's always easier to contact somebody who is local as opposed to somebody who is not local.
Can somebody out of state have Section Eight houses?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
Can somebody who is a landlord out of state have Section Eight housing?
Yeah, that's.
True. So this is, is there a formula for what is healthy for a city to have? Like what percentage of Section Eight housing would be a healthy?
I think that, I think that really falls more to, when we did the housing study, it really did show what, what is affordable housing and how many affordable housing units we need. So it isn't really talking about Section Eight.
Right.
And I do believe there's some information about the Section Eight in that report. I don't have it in front of me. But I do believe there is some information that talks about where we were back when the study was originally done. And that's really kind of your metric is what is the, and it does talk about the median income levels and, and what is an affordable house for Independence and how many of those affordable house units do we have? One of the things that the housing study pointed out was in order to create more affordable, for example, single-family homes was to try to get developments to reinvest in our existing housing stock. Because that's going to be a lot less expensive than new housing stock. One of the things that developers have told us, one of the reasons why, you know, you're not seeing a lot of inventory out there is because some will tell us that they can't build a house less than four hundred thousand.
Right, right.
And that's not necessarily affordable for most people. And so even though a four hundred thousand dollar house today may seem, you know, in, in line with the market, it still isn't really affordable. And so that's one of the things that the housing study pointed out was to try to create reinvestment opportunities into our existing, you know, areas instead of seeing those houses, you know, get leveled or get raised or fall into the hands of maybe outside investors that don't necessarily have the same stake, you know, that we want to see here in Independence, is to reinvest in those areas to make it more affordable and to try to keep seniors or what we might see as single-household individuals as they age in Independence.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like a great opportunity to relook at some of these areas that do need just some redevelopment or repurposing because having that walkable community is everything.
I think one other thing too that, in when I was doing research for this and stuff, if we have more Section Eight housing in the city, it's going to attract outside people with housing vouchers as well. So more people are going to come because so many of these waitlists are closed. And so they, once they get a housing voucher, they have, I believe it's six months to find a place before it expires. So they're kind of looking into all the general areas, like going from city to city to city looking, so it's, I think it's more complex than, because I was first thinking like, well, what's the city's poverty rate? You know, like how many people are living in, are qualifying in this, but it's, it's more complex than that because it's going to be how many people from the surrounding area that are willing to move to Independence because they found it and it's close enough to the world that they can still get there is, is part of the issue too, when, when thinking about those things.
I just think we have a real barrier, though, with just the word, Section Eight. I, I don't, just the last five years, anytime we discuss an apartment, inevitably people say, well, I heard it was Section Eight, like it's the worst possible thing. And I think just what we've learned tonight, it's very different than what I think a lot of people think it is. So that's the problem, that's the barrier, is that. The perception and, and, and I don't know how, I don't know how we fix that.
I, I think calling it Housing Voucher, Voucher Assistance Program or something, making up a different name for using some of the, the words that are in Section Eight and the city having some sort of educational-type campaign for, would probably help some.
Yeah, they don't even call it Section Eight anymore.
Right.
So is there any plan to kind of look at areas where, because obviously you'd want to look at areas that have great transportation, have. to look at areas that have great transportation, have shopping nearby? I mean, is there?
Yeah, we have, so the study did point out opportunity areas.
Okay.
And that's one of those factors when we look at, for example, like the Alton Apartments that was over on 39th Street in Cracker Neck. That was an area that was identified in the housing study as an area that needed private investment. Because if you didn't do any investment in there, you can see that area go down. And obviously, you're, you have neighborhoods that really don't need any kind of public assistance. They're, you know, neighborhoods that are doing fairly well, affluent areas. And then you have other parts of the city that really need some sort of city incentive sometimes to get people to develop. And so there were heat maps that were kind of showing areas of the city as to what needed to be redev, what, what needed private development, what needed city influence type programs, and then what areas of the city were doing well on its own. But again, it, it's hard to really break it down specific, but other than the heat maps kind of showing specific areas. And like I said, the Alton area there at 39th and Cracker Neck was one of those where it did identify, it was stable, but without investment, particularly private investment, you can start to see that go down.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. This is great. We needed that education. Yes, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I give some work to Rick?
Sure.
Hey, Rick, today I read and listened to information about short-term rental changes in the city of Shawnee. And they are looking towards the World Cup coming and others, and the number of potential short-term rentals happening as people want to come in and stay in our city. So they've set some parameters. And their parameter, one of them was that if you're gonna have a short-term rental in Shawnee, you cannot live, the manager cannot be further away than 40 miles. So that they are within striking distance if there's a problem. And there was a stiff, stiff penalty if someone was caught not being a registered short-term rental, which was far steeper than what our code right now says. And then lastly, they are charging a extra tax as a business, as a commercial business, if they accept any type of short-term rental on that space, whether it's one time or 50 times. And the example they gave was that their city tax for that home went from 18% to 32%. So I would love to see us review even our updated short-term rental in just continuing to protect the city. But also, we know there's gonna be a revenue opportunity for homeowners. And I do think there's a need and a necessity for people to be paying taxes on that, that rental income. So.
Yeah, well, I'll certainly take a look at what they've put together.
We also wanted to look at that, that, I forget what it's called, ready room? Room ready or?
Ready.
Room ready.
No.
No, it's like where people can literally rent out their bedroom.
Home, I think, homeroom.
Room ready.
I think it's homeroom, isn't it?
It's what?
Homeroom.
Homeroom. It is. It is. So we kind of, we should look at that quickly.
Wait.
Because that's totally gonna happen.
Yes.
That's it. Anything else? Okay, we are adjourned at 7:55 PM.